I'm going to call the City Council Caucus to order for June 27, 2016. Under original consideration, we have 15 items. Agenda item number one, if the clerk would please read.
Under original consideration, in ordinance reappropriating the 2016 budget.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, in ordinance reappropriating the 2016 Law Department budget.
Could I please have quiet in the chamber? Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing accepting of funding for the Woodlawn Preserve.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Thank you. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
And this was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing agreement between the city of Schenectady and the Police Department Association.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing an agreement between IBEW Local 206 and the city of Schenectady.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Hoyt v. City of Schenectady.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to settle a tax servuary for Nemo Hospital, hospitality.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to settle a tax servuary for Albany Street Ventures.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to settle a tax servuary for Mitchell Road Ventures.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the sale of 931 Francis Avenue.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of 206 Linden Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 13 Park Place.
And that was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the sale of 81 Cheltenham Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 15, please.
Item number 15, a resolution recognizing the 2015 New York State Associated Press awardees.
Discussing committee and Mr. Palamene, this will be taken out of order. Mr. Palamene will present if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Adjourned by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren. All those in favor, aye. We are adjourned. I will now call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, June 27. I will ask you to rise for the invocation from Reverend Bill Levering of the First Reformed Church Schenectady.
I do this, this is how it works. I pray and you listen. So, you know, I'm not praying for you, I'm not praying for the city, but, um, dear God, be with us in turbulent times. Be with us and help us to work for the common good. We pray for people who are afraid. We pray for people who are afraid for their next meal, for their pension, for the violence that they face. We pray for peacemakers and pray for peacekeepers. We pray your blessings on this nation. Be with the deliberations of this council. Help them to work for the common good. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I'll ask Pat Smith, the president of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could call the roll.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferraris excused.
Mr. Palamene.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mutiveren.
Present.
Ms. Perazo.
Present.
We have one out-of-order resolution this evening. This is a ceremonial resolution recognizing the 2015 New York State Associated Press awardees, and Mr. Palamene will present that, those resolutions.
Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
So, these are to recognize the Gazette workers, reporters, and photographers who won the New York State Associated Press Awards. Whereas the New York State Associated Press Awards are given to those who have demonstrated commitment to the highest levels of excellence in journalism, and whereas Haley Vicaro, a Daily Gazette reporter, was awarded second place in the best spot news coverage category in the 2015 New York State Associated Press Awards, and whereas Peter R. Barber, a Daily Gazette photojournalist, was awarded first place in best sports photo category, second place in the best photo story category, and third place in the best feature photo category in the 2015 New York State Associated Press Awards, and whereas Mike McAdam, a Daily Gazette reporter, was awarded first place in the best sports column category in the 2015 New York State Associated Press Awards, and whereas Mark McGuire, a Daily Gazette executive sports editor, was awarded second place in the best sports column category in the 2015 New York State Associated Press Awards. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to acknowledge the achievements of Haley Vicaro, Peter R. Barber, Mike McAdam, and Mark McGuire as 2015 New York State Associated Press Award recipients. I'd like to move this resolution.
Moved by Mr. Palamene, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren. All those in favor, aye.
Congratulations, please.
Do you want to say anything?
Thanks very much.
No? Do you want to say anything?
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They just write everything, they don't say anything.
Our pleasure. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the June 13, 2016 meeting. Moved by Mr. Palamene, seconded by Mr. Kozier. All those in favor, aye. Thank you. And communications and petitions. If the clerk would please, please read those.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, June 27, 2016. Under the category of official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated June 27, 2016. Under general, there are none, and there are no petitions.
And on to committee reports. Any committee reports this evening? Okay. Very good. Privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have three people signed up to speak this evening, and the first is Mary McLean.
Agenda item number 15. First of all, why are agenda items taken out of order when the council president asks if there are no objections to take the item out of order? For whom is the question intended? Council members or the general public who will address the item? Is it asking too much of a recipient, of the recipients who are being recognized by this body to wait to be called in the order that the item appears on the agenda? As for item number 15, it would have been thoughtful and gracious on the part of this body to have included Kathleen Moore for recognition for the years she covered the city council meetings. Gazette readers do not receive the same council coverage that Ms. Moore provided. She was thorough, her stories were timely, no item was insignificant, she listened, and she paid attention to details. For instance, on May 23, a citizen was arrested right here where I stand. No story was written. Kathleen Moore would have made it front-page news. On June 13, three city officials were not present for a city council meeting. No story. American flags fly tattered and torn throughout the city. No story. On June 6, a council member left the committee meeting early. He was not present for the executive session. The following week, council voted to sell 10 city houses. The council member voted for all of them even though he was not present when council discussed the properties in committee. No story. Some council members are here because Kathleen Moore and Mr. Zernak from the Times Union would print the names of community activists in their stories. Those reporters were people-oriented. Kathleen Moore lives in Schenectady. Please acknowledge her and the work she did reporting on the city's political scene and her professional awards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Potem. Um, one of the things on the agenda item is the union contract. Again, it was reported in the Gazette a couple of months back that there was $3 million worth of overtime done on the police department. Now, over the years, I have made a suggestion that we would go out to the different other communities like New York City and some of the other larger cities and request to have minority officers transfer in. Well, last April of 2015, you transferred in two officers. They happened to be white. There was one sergeant and one patrol. Now, you're saying about $60,000 is the cost of a police officer, and you take it by a multiplier for the city is about 1.55, so that's about $90,000 per officer for taxes and benefits and everything else. You times that by 10, that's $1 million. That means you could take 1/3 of that overtime and you go out and hire 10 police officers that have already gone through the academy, they're all ready to go. That means within 30 days, you can have 10 officers in training and then within 90 days have them out on the street. It's that simple and that easy. Why? Also, Haley also reported in the Gazette report was that the chiefs couldn't even know where the overtime was coming from. She reported that right in the newspaper article. That was bad. So, I mean, you know, if you say that you can't cut 1/3 of that overtime to go out and hire 10 officers, there's something wrong. And on top of it all, you're giving the police officers a 2% pay raise. This year, senior citizens and disabled got no pay raise. There was no COLA increase in Social Security, and we're possibly looking at no COLA increase for the next following year. So, why are they, so why are the unions getting a 2% increase in pay when the rate of inflation is not even there? It makes no sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Greetings, all honorable elected and appointed officials. I'm Bob Harvey, I live on Plymouth Avenue in Schenectady, and I'm here representing myself. I was questioning information about this Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. There's a sentence in the presentation in last week's committee that says, "The police department and district attorney's office must submit a joint application outlining initiatives and programs that will further the department's mission," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The next paragraph, "The police department and DA's office recommended to spend the funding in the following manner, pending input from the city council and the community." And these figures seem pretty good, and I like the support for the department, but if I'm part of the public, I don't know where the input came from. Uh, I didn't get a letter as president of Eastern Avenue Neighborhood Association. I didn't see anything in the newspaper, so I must be missing something. Maybe I'm a social media techno dummy, but didn't get a chance to make any input. Okay? Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed, and I'll entertain a motion to move, excuse me, approve the legislative agenda, moved by Mr. Palamene, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor, aye. Thank you. And we'll move on to privilege of the floor regarding general city business. I have seven people signed up to speak. The first is Anthony Carata.
Good evening, Mr. Burnett, Madam President, City Council. Before I get to speaking, what I want to speak on tonight is just want to praise our police department and also say as a law-abiding citizen, not just a city, state, nation, I respect the law and anybody in law enforcement. While I'm praising the police department and detectives, because I know they're busy, is the recent arrest that they made and the recent investigations are still looking into the matter of crimes and all that. Now, what I want to talk about is the one factor I believe, Mr. Burnett, our police force, not the good officers who do the job, the bad apples, and the mayor tend not to take into factor about crime is the victims. The innocent people's lives who's been cut short in the city for far too long. They are somebody's family members, i.e. mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, what have you. As someone who can understand where the victims are coming from, who have to bury their daughters because of fact that they don't see them growing up. What I'm talking about here is sometime last year in Hampton Hill neighborhood, a young girl sitting there in her apartment gets killed by a straight bullet. Here's someone's daughter who just got life cut short. A parent has to bury her. That should never happen. It should be the other way around, showing and bearing the parents, not bearing the children. Because of fact that, I had three loved ones who had died in those causes. My grandfather, my namesake, my mother, my grandmother, all died in those causes. But I can understand where these victims come from. The heartache, the sadness. I just recently, a little girl that we just honored in January, I have a friend who knows his family members who got burned in that fire. I mean, come on. The one common factor which I believe Burnett, the police force, and the mayor does not take in fact in this council is the victims. Now, I'm not a member of victim advocacy or anything like that, but I understand where the victims come from. That's the one factor which I believe you have to take consideration, because I see real life stuff on TV, the best scenes covered. I watch that stuff. That's what I learned about where the parents should not be burying the children. I understand where the victims come from. Please take it into consideration, next time you do something about report crime, the victims. That's what matters, the victims.
Thank you.
Madam President, Commissioner, City Council. I would like to thank the president for coming out to the Hampton Hill Neighborhood Association, Sam Black Party, and City Councilman Marion Porterfield, and City Councilman John Mutiveren. I'd like to thank John Palamene for leaving all the food that he left for us. Next thing, I want to talk about Jerry Borrell Park. Paul LeFond take it on himself to put a logo, the Y logo, in Jerry Borrell Park. He did not come to the neighbors, nobody in Hampton Hill, to ask us about that logo there. Everybody know our number to ring our bells when there's election, but when it comes to doing stuff in Hampton Hill, no, we do not count, and that has to stop. If they want a logo, they could put a banner on the fence, but a big logo in the park there, it got to move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to Schenectady's decision-makers. Madam President, I do not share your opinion of the city engineer. As a matter of fact, I will sell my house to you or to him so that either one of you can live with the decision that the two of you made for others. The engineering department is not into beautification. They told me so. I am, and so is the document I have with me, which I forgot to bring up. It is the comprehensive plan that council ordered and taxes and taxpayers paid big bucks for. The goals of the document have not been met, but the city looks for new toys. There is enough trash on Albany Street to start a new city dump. That's not smart. The weeds along Vitor Avenue are high enough to choke a horse, and the fallen rotten vegetation is a natural breeding place for vermin. Not smart. As for the blanket recognition program that council approved for all city workers, recently they installed a city road sign in the garden plot that I maintain. The workers used my stones to brace the city's sign. I needed the stones for the shepherd hooks. They really were prepared to do their job. Smart. And I invite all of you to come see what somebody did beside the garden on Grand Villa Ward after I spent five years trying to beautify that corner. There are demons running around Goose Hill, and I hope they end up on State Street and do the same thing in front of Proctor's Theater. Another issue, there has been some activity on the Ellis Hospital Corner. It is not satisfactory. That monstrosity must be concealed as indicated in the presentation picture and the guardrail painted like the ones in the downtown area. Lastly, how many elected officials have academic backgrounds like the list the councilman read for the kids from the high school? He should have told us about the 90% non-residents working in our school district. The councilman sold us out. It happened during his watch. The Donny Vertches of the world don't bluff their way through life. Schenectady's elected body does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Potem. Last Wednesday, there was a presentation done by the City Council, done on the Community Needs Assessment through HUD, and the only way you could put it was a snow job. And basically, the thing was done without community participation. It was done by the community leaders within the Democratic Party, and then all of a sudden, within three weeks, they're asking for the public to make comments, whether the comments will be added to it or not. I asked one of the presenters there and the note-takers that are gathering all the information, I says, "Where's the jobs and where's affirmative action?" And they said, "Not once did it come up in any one of the advisory committees that they held." I had also asked about some of the housing questions, where they said multi-level housing. A lot of people don't realize the multi-level housing that's going on right now, to where taxpayers are paying through matchup blocks, through sales tax, a regressive tax towards the poor, that they're paying for luxury townhouses when this city has a 95% or higher non-accessible and non-affordable housing. Even Gillespie said that, "Hey, look, we're going to make, we're going to make the new apartments that he was supposed to build and supposed to buy. I don't know what the price is, and they're going to set the wages up to $60,000." That's nearly five times the average rent, I mean, the average salary almost nearly four to five times of Hampton Hill, which is around $15,000, $17,000. We need more affordable and accessible housing. We don't need to take the money from the poor and give it to the rich, and that's what we've done. We don't need any more luxury townhouses. We don't need any more luxury apartments. That's what we don't need. And all you're doing is taking all the grant money and everything else and throwing it towards that direction. On a positive note, I'll leave, almost nearly three to four years, a petition went through Congress asking on, in 2014, that the LBG community civil rights should have a National Park Unit. After two years, after nearly two years, just a couple of months ago, the LBG community got its wish. The Needs Assessment located Stonewell area down in New York City as the site for the civil rights movement for the LBG. On Friday, President Obama decided to honor the National Park Unit number 312, uh, 412, excuse me, 412 Stonewell National Monument. Madam President, I have the five-page document I want to hand to you as the entry in the record. I don't want to read the five pages, I don't have the time, but congratulations on the LBG community of receiving a park unit for civil rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Glenn. Thank you, John.
Good evening, Madam President, distinguished members of the council. I'm Michael Glenn. I've resided in the city for my entire life and have lived in Bellevue for the past 46 years. I appear before you this evening on behalf of the many voters who include family pets as members of their households. The issue I wish to bring forth in this chamber is the growing practice of thoughtless, inconsiderate use of fireworks and explosives within the city. This disturbance occurs almost every evening, beginning in mid-June, from as early as 7:00 in the evening into the early morning hours. At one time, this practice occurred around the 4th of July, perhaps the night before or after. As a result of Schenectady permitting a group of carpetbagger fireworks profiteers to ply their trade within the city and prey off the families that can least afford it, the city is now flooded with explosives. Please tell me who in local government thought permitting this activity was a good idea? I have two well-mannered dogs. They're part of my family. One is 14 years old and the other is eight years old. These dogs stay within my property, do not cause a nuisance to the neighborhood. For the past couple of years, my best friends have been subjected to a terrifying barrage of firecrackers, M80s, M100s randomly exploded by my inconsiderate neighbors who live on my street or as much as six blocks from my house in any direction. As recently as this weekend, we experienced a series of explosions that rocked my windows and sent my oldest dog Nick into a seizure. and sent my oldest dog Nick into a seizure, marked by heavy panting, extremely fast heartbeat, physical nervous pacing within his own house in fear. His heart beat so fast and so hard, I could hear it pounding against his ribs. He remained in that condition for hours following this unwelcome act. Ironically, the person responsible for Nick's condition will creep back into the darkness, perhaps mentally attracted to some other bright shiny object. The question I pose to you, ladies and gentlemen, this evening is simple. Can anyone in this room justify to me and to many other citizens of this community the positive social value of permitting the sale and discharge of explosions within our neighborhoods? It is clear that the majority of voters in Schenectady do not participate in nor approve such Neanderthal behavior. Is the clear and present danger of this activity not evident to the leaders of this city? Do we have to endure the certain upcoming fireworks accident that will cause permanent injury or death to a child or an adult before everyone sees the light?
I do have to ask you to summarize, Mr. Plank.
It's not within the scope and authority of the City of Schenectady to prohibit the sale and discharge of these explosives? Can citizens be permitted to simply flaunt the law with total disregard to the impact of others? If I were to begin burning old tires in my yard under that principle, I can do anything I want. Would the neighbors in the surrounding streets not have a right to complain about the old estate?
Mr. Plank, I have to ask you to summarize.
Thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll take up this very serious quality of life issue. Thank you.
Robert Harvey.
I'm Bob Harvey, and I'm back again. Various things regarding the Gazette and the awards, I think they were justly earned. I believe the Gazette in the last few years has upped its quality of news coverage and extensive explanation of issues that go on. So I'd like to put a prompt in for that. I'd also like to ditto the gentleman about the fireworks. Is there an ordinance as far as noise? If somebody's doing fireworks after midnight, Friday night, for instance, can that noise level be adjudged to be in violation? Ask Commissioner Bennett to get to that, answer that for the public. And last, this is positive, the Schenectady Pride, Schenectady Smiles New Photo Contest for the summer. Anybody heard about it? Raise your hands. Okay, all right. Everybody's eligible above the age of 13 to submit digital photographs through your cell camera or through your digital camera, various variety of subjects. Any picture taken from May 1st on through July 27th, there will be a pep rally, there will be prizes, substantial prizes. They'll make art, framed art, out of the winning contest winners. It's a great idea, and we're looking for Schenectady to have fun and take pictures of things that give you pride in Schenectady, whether it's diversity, community, natural environment, architecture, urban design, business organizations. I'm part of an organizing group that includes some downtown businesses and city clerk and city deputy clerk and others, but it's like 20, I can't go into it. Here's some, pass it around. More flyers here. Participate. Take a picture. Everybody takes a picture. Take a picture here. How many smiling faces can we get? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Smith.
Good evening, Madam President, Commissioner Bennett, members of the City Council. I am president of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. The broken window syndrome. In well-maintained neighborhoods, it is also applicable as to how homeowners and other residents keep their properties up, their behavior, and what laws they choose to ignore that have negative consequences for other residents. The issue is on Avenue M. The homeowner has about eight chickens. He tore up his yard, deposited piles of trees against the neighbor's fence, other debris is in the yard. The neighbors were told the chickens were for a 4H education project, there was a small coop in the yard. Is there not some sort of code or zoning that prohibits the ISO that is developed? For almost three months, we have made several departments aware of the chickens at this residence. They have now wandered both sides of the street and in backyards. They use the yards of these taxpayers as their outhouse. The odor is awful. The residents are upset, most of the residents are older and have lived there for many years. Some are afraid of repercussion if they complain. I was called last week at 8:45 PM and asked to come to Avenue M. Chickens were running amok all over the place. A call to the non-emergency number got me a, we can call in on the control, the owner was not home. When code was called several weeks ago, I explained the issue, and I was told by an employee that people should mind their own business. I sternly explained that this is a code violation, and then I was transferred to zoning. First, zoning has been no help in correcting the issue on Chrysler and Lakewood for months. We fear this will be an indication of the lack of support for the issues currently on Avenue M. I spoke with Mr. LaFond, a daytime visit saw no chickens. They are kept indoors. Mr. LaFond suggested the neighbors file a deposition. Upon speaking with Assistant Chief Falvo, I explained the issue, and he suggested that someone, and I suggested that someone must go in the evening. Assistant Chief Falvo said he would call the gentleman. The results of that phone call were the chicken's owner said they only visit and they live at his mother's. Really? Remember 4H project, chicken coop? They were still there last Saturday night. I was informed that they would be gone immediately. I also gave information concerning another chicken coop and have not heard back. Is Mount Pleasant being ignored for any particular reason? MPNA has worked hard to maintain a good relationship with all departments, and this isn't excusable. Many residents of Mount Pleasant should do what they want, as there are no consequences, and maybe it's only a privilege for a few chosen. As what is good for the hen, is same for the rooster. We are trying to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood, but without city enforcement of current regulations, we have a breakdown. It is easier to prevent breakdowns than to turn a street around. This is not a major crime, but a quality of life issue, and with these type of regulations not being enforced, what kind of good neighbors will we attract to purchase homes in our neighborhoods? We won't. Good neighborhoods won't live, good neighbors won't live in areas that have these issues, and then the prices of houses decline, just so homeowners can leave. We have neighborhoods in this city who are on this road already. Do we really need more? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare this portion of the meeting closed and move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Porterfield.
I wanted to just mention that, actually, Mr. Plank mentioned it to some degree, that we had three Community Needs Assessment meetings to have input about concerns. And I just want to clarify that this was done by HUD. It was not done by the city. HUD came in and actually did that. I want to make sure that people are clear about that. Additionally, it was not chosen by, you know, I just want to speak, I have, you know, I respect that people have their opinion about things, but I just like to make sure the facts are correct when they're talking about them. So the people that were chosen to go to the meetings had nothing to do with any party affiliation, had to do with organizations that they represented. There was community representation. I must agree, I don't think there was enough, I have to agree with that, but there was community representation at those meetings. The two items he said that were not mentioned, I was specific, I attended two of these meetings, so what I'm saying is not hearsay. The information about affirmative action was in fact discussed, as was jobs. Those two things were discussed during these meetings. So I'm not sure where he's receiving his information. At this point in time, the, what's, the follow-up to this is that the community now has an opportunity to complete an online survey through the city's website. They can go to www.cityofschenectady.com, scroll down, and look for the survey, to complete the survey. I encourage people to do that, especially if people feel that their voice wasn't heard or they weren't able to attend the meetings because they were held during the day. This is an opportunity that people can give their input, because what happens with the input that's given determines what's, some of the things are gonna happen within the city for the next two years. So here's an opportunity for people to participate in the Community Needs Assessment by going on to the online survey. Additionally, if people don't have access to online, there are hard copies that can be found at the library. I know that, I'm sure that the downtown branch and the Phillips-Ornament branch also have hard copies. And if you can't reach people through any of that, I'm on the website, and I'd be happy to have people to call me, and I will direct them to how they can participate in the survey, because I think it's hugely important that the community participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Other miscellaneous business. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank everybody for coming out and speaking tonight, and a lot of the issues are the same quality of life issues that we've been dealing with for quite a while. Just to answer Jason Plank's question about the contracts, there's two words that cover it. Binding arbitration is what it is. That's the bottom line. That's why, anytime we go to binding arbitration, I don't think we've won yet, is what I can say, so that's why we try to avoid that. About what Ms. Isaacs brought up about Burrell Park, we also know that there's been issues there with after-hours activity, and that's clear, and I'm sure Chief Falvo has addressed that. He did send an email out, and I hope that takes hold and that people get the message that they don't belong in there after hours. That's as simple as that. That's the bottom line with that one. So I hope that goes. Oak Street Bridge, I'm glad to hear that there's some movement now. We found out that there's a Northeast Director of Government Relations involved, which is good. Too bad we didn't find out that a couple of years ago, that there's somebody else that to talk to, but I'm glad that they're gonna be involved and gonna help set something up to get that project finally going. It's been way too long, and that, again, that's where I think our state and federal officials could help, but apparently this man reads the paper, so that's good, and it's good to hear that he got involved and is gonna be a conduit for us. That's very good to hear. About Mr. Harvey's question, can maybe Commissioner something explain about that, when, you know, when you speak about that public input for that, for the grant that we awarded tonight? He's wondering, or maybe Ms. Perazzo, you can answer that, where the public input was on this question. That's a good question that he asked, and I'm sure it can be answered. Mr. Glenn's question, and we know, I shudder to think what we're gonna face this weekend, because it has been leading up, and I spoke about this two weeks ago, I'll speak about it again. We just can't have this indiscriminate fireworks. What we can do about it, not blaming the police department or anybody else, and I just really hope that everyone, when they hear this stuff, to call it in. I know you can't hear exactly where it's coming from, and that's why the police have no place to respond to. There's a haze of smoke, it's like Vietnam in the middle of the war, going through the city, but how do police respond to that? If we can get addresses, and if people would just, again, be respectful. I understand what he's talking about with elderly dogs. I had one myself, and it was the same thing. The dog used to run under the bed. That was years ago, and that was only for a day or two, but now it goes on for a long time, and through all hours of the morning. I, I have, I don't know what to say, except I wish people would just smarten up and try to respect other people's feelings, that's all. That's really what it takes. How do we get that across? I don't know. Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, now we have livestock in the city. I'm pretty sure that's covered under code, and I hope something can be done about that. It goes on and on, but, again, maybe this council should, should urge our county legislatures to rescind that, that law that they passed, or resolution that they passed last year, because I'm sure the intentions were good, but the fallout from it is terrible. That's what it is. Who's to say what's legal, what's not legal? I know when the police respond, I've talked to them, and they're saying, well, they're legal. Well, what is and what isn't? The problem is, there's plenty of fireworks displays throughout the capital region for people to see and to hear, and it's controlled, it's controlled with the fire department, and that's the way things should be. What's legal, if people are only using the things that are legal, there wouldn't be any problem. The problem comes in when people go the step beyond what's legal, and there's a lot of that going around, we all hear it. And it just shouldn't happen. We want to make this a livable city. It should be a livable city, so that's what I have to say about that. And again, the farmer's market in Bellevue, Fairview Park, Thursdays, 3:30 to 6:30. See if you can support that. You got Burmaster Farms, and maybe Hasbrook Farms will be there. So they're trying to build it, it's a good idea, we'll see if it goes, so we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kozier.
Thank you, Madam President. And just to follow up again with the so-called fireworks, they're not fireworks, first of all, these are sparklers. These are items that cannot go more than three feet in the air, they're all sparklers. What we are hearing and what we are seeing are not sold in Schenectady County, and supposedly, hopefully, are not sold in New York State. When I saw the tents popping up last week, I immediately called our city clerk Chuck Thorne to making sure that they had proper permits taken out from the City of Schenectady. And in fact, I was told that they did some inspections today or over the weekend, and maybe the Commissioner can follow up on that with us as well. So again, these are sparklers that are being sold at these stands. There are no M80s, there are no rockets that are shooting up in the air, and it's just coincidental, today, when I got home, I checked my mail, believe it or not, there was a postcard from a, three companies in Massachusetts that were soliciting me to buy fireworks. Buy one box, get another box for free, and free shipping on top of that. So, again, I don't know, I just glanced at it, but I'm assuming that's where the majority of these folks are coming from. But please, and I know the Commissioner will speak to it as well, we encourage our residents to make those phone calls to dispatch, and again, we'll try our very, very best to follow up with those. And again, thank you, Councilwoman Porterfield, for following up with the Community Needs Assessment. It really is troublesome when you hear folks coming to the floor, privilege of the floor, and just really giving such misinformation that you want to shake your head up here. To claim that this process was done by the Democratic Party is absolutely ridiculous. The Community Needs Assessment, we, I know ourselves, had all announced the public meetings that they had. I was very fortunate to attend all three of them. I could not attend the Proctors' function, because I had two other events I had to be at, but Jackie Mancini has done a great job, along with the mayor and our council here, to really take a look at this. And again, it was a grant from HUD. We were one of six cities in New York State that were awarded this Community Needs Assessment, and I'm very proud of the Cities of Schenectady for moving forward on that, and I think we'll have some good outcome, and please make sure we take that survey, so we can really narrow this down. The other piece, and I don't know if it's on our website yet or not, but I got a survey for the bicycle paths. We're doing a survey here with the Cities of Schenectady regarding information with bike paths here in the Cities of Schenectady, what can we do to improve them? What streets are you looking to have included in the, in the bike paths? So I encourage you, and hopefully, again, the city will put this up on their website so that we can log in to that as well. And of course, most importantly, have a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July weekend. Again, the fireworks are very, very dangerous, and I know our police officers will be very, very busy. We have a black lab, and believe it or not, our neighbors were doing sparklers, and she, he heard the, the sparklers, and we had to open the basement door. That is where our black lab stayed until 2:00 in the morning. So I certainly hear the concerns of the dog owners and what they go through. So, again, have a happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Mr. Palamene.
In regards to the fireworks, obviously, they're a big problem, not only in Bellevue, but around the city. Certainly, the ones sold in the city are not fireworks themselves, but people are bringing them in illegally from other states, and it is a problem, something that I know we're all concerned with, and something that perhaps there's things that we can do. In regards to the Oak Street Bridge, thanks to Mr. Falatiko for reaching out to Amtrak. I know the Oak Street Bridge is important to several of us on this council. I know I spoke personally to representatives of Congressman Tonko, as well as some other representatives, to try to see what can be done, and fortunately, Mr. Falatiko got some headway, and I know Ms. Perazzo worked on a resolution as well, so. headway, and I know Ms. Perazzo worked on a resolution as well, so it's good news to see some movement there by Amtrak. In regards to the resolution for the Gazette reporters, that's something that was a longstanding tradition that the council used to do. I know Mr. Sirmak was... wanted to be... he didn't want to be recognized, but the council wanted to recognize him. I understand that he used to turn that down, but other reporters would accept, and it's a tradition that the council used to do for quite a while. That's something I checked into, and is something that is, I think, well, needed for such a high award. Late last evening, I returned from Romania, Bucharest, Romania, and while I was there, I met with... I'm part of the Romanian Academy honorary member, but I met with representatives there regarding economic development, the Institute of Economic Forecasting. And while I was there, working and doing some stuff, talks and whatever, one of the things that came up was the Smart Cities Initiative. Europe is much further advanced than we are here in the United States in regards to that, but they were quite interested to hear that Skynectity is moving in that regards with the mayor's initiatives for our city. And they were very positive as to the mayor's movements and some of the things, the initiatives that he's trying to move forward, so I think that's a good thing for the city. They were very positive in regards to their comments to the things that we're doing, and we're very positive with what they did throughout Romania, as well as other parts of Europe. Certainly, Genova, Italy, is one of the leaders in Smart Cities initiatives, but throughout Europe, it's a big thing, and I think that's something that we'll benefit from quite a bit. So the mayor has us on the right track, and hopefully, we'll see some great fruit from that in the coming months and years. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner?
Thank you. Regarding the transfer of police officers from other jurisdictions into the city, that is not an automatic process. Skynectity County Civil Service has to approve every single one of those, and if they do not have... excuse me, if they have not established the fact that when they came on, wherever they joined, they met the same requirements as Skynectity County Civil Service, they cannot be transferred into the police department. It is not automatic. It's quite a process. And then the other issue is, yeah, New York City's got a ton of police officers. They also have huge salaries, and very few of them want to leave New York City to come upstate, which is anything above Newburgh for most of them, because the financial difference, and therefore, the pension difference is quite large. Regarding the fireworks, that is not a city law, that is a county statute. Thirty-seven of the counties outside of New York City have approved the sale of these legal fireworks, but it's pretty simple. What they're selling is not anything that's going to hurt the dog's ear and disturb people. What you're hearing is illegal fireworks going off. You're talking about sparklers, you're talking about caps, things like that. Today, code enforcement, the police department, and planning inspected the four sites within the city of Skynectity and shut three of them down. And the reason we shut them down was because they failed to meet the code-specified space However, as of close of business today, three of them have yet to provide proof that they can meet that requirement, and until such time as they do, they will not be allowed to operate within the city. The noise ordinance, Carl Falatiko, I'm sure could talk chapter and verse about that, including how difficult it can be to enforce it. The police have two issues with the fireworks. One, there's so many of these calls, they couldn't possibly handle them all. And number two, nobody's specific as to where the biggest problem in the neighborhood is emanating from. Now, I did get an email from a woman in Mount Pleasant describing the situation to me. I asked her to get me the address. She did. I sent supervisor and two officers up to have a friendly chat with the people who live there, and then she got back to me saying it was the quietest weekend they had in quite some time. We can go see these people, and we will go see them, but we need to know who they are. So therefore, we need the public. They can either email me the information, they can call. If you call the dispatch center, remember, you're not going to get the city, if you will, you're getting the county dispatchers. It might be easier if you just email the police department through my office, any information that you have regarding anybody that's involved in the trafficking of the fireworks, or the use or both, and we'll go have a chat with them. We can't lose anything by trying that. That direct contact may open their eyes a little bit, where now they're getting a little nervous about doing it. But there's absolutely no way we can keep up what the increasing number of calls as we approach the Fourth of July, the number will be staggering. And that's great if nothing else is happening in the police world, but that's just not The chickens. This has been floating around for quite a while, and initially, I talked to Steve Strickman, because he's the code officer, if you will, or he was. It was his responsibility to cite the people for the chickens. So I said, "Steve, here's where the chickens are living. Go see the people." And he did, and he reported back to me that, regrettably, he did not cite them. He had a conversation with the female who lives there, who claims that the chickens would be gone within a few days. Well, the chickens are still there, and Steve's gone, so we do not... we don't have a code enforcement officer. So by absentia, the police department has to get involved. There's been a little confusion between myself, I think, and Jack Falvo, as to what I wanted them to do. I'll talk to Carl Falatiko. Maybe we can issue some kind of a summons for a nuisance, bring the parties in, and have a chat with them. I don't know if that's doable, but otherwise, we just got to get them cited, and let's take statements from anybody up there, can document when they saw the chickens, where they saw the chickens, because without that, pardon me, direct observation, we have tried. Paul LaFond went up there three times, no birds. So they must be nocturnal, but then on weekends, holidays, nights, they're out running around again. So this little nuisance has become quite an issue, but one way or the other, we will get it resolved this week. Correct, Carl? Thank you.
Well, not that quality of life issues are a joking matter, but did they cross the road is really the question. The chickens, yes. Mr. Glenn, I could not agree with you or empathize with you more. The county passing the law last year for the non-explosive sparklers, regardless, was upsetting to me, because I do feel like it blurs the lines of what is legal and what is not legal, and it blurs those lines to the people that want them blurred the most. I've been woken up at 1:30 in the morning, I've been woken up at 3:30 in the morning with loud explosives in my neighborhood. I call the police, but I also sympathize with the police, because I don't know how they could possibly... I mean, these explosions take a matter of seconds, and how can they possibly... and they're random, you know? So I don't know what the answer is. All I can say is, I empathize with you, and I agree with you, and I feel your frustration, because I have the same frustration. And it concerns me for the safety of our educated housing stock as well. Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Department of Justice, it's a JAG grant, Justice Assistance Grant. I'm not familiar with any requests for input from the public. I don't know if that was the subject of a public hearing or not, but I will tell you that the Justice Department is extremely strict about what you can spend that money on. And again, I don't know the answer, whether or not that was anything that would have been a public hearing in the past or not.
Thank you.
And the mayor will be back within the next couple of hours. He's returning from the United States Conference of Mayors in Indianapolis, Indiana. Thank you.
Okay. But to follow up on that, it's good news that we, you know, we're right on top of it. Thank you for the diligent work to close down the three sites that were not in compliance. Unfortunately, that's another thing we can't control. If they have the proper permitting and they meet the proper guidelines, then they do have a right to set up shop in the city, which is unfortunate, so at least we're holding them to task. As an update on the Oak Street Bridge, a little further, Corporation Council did let me know that we received a contract from Amtrak, so that's good. It looks like they held their word, and they're moving forward as quickly as possible. I want to just say congratulations to Capo... to Capoche Wine Lounge. They celebrated their grand opening with a ribbon cutting last week. If you're not familiar, they're located in the Foster Building, which is 508 State Street. Absolutely amazingly restored building, a treasure in our downtown, and a lot of hard work and dedication by Sequins Development owner Jeff Buell, and it's a beautiful wine lounge, so you stop by and give them your congratulations in person. On Monday, June 20th, we actually had the New York State Commissioner of Education visit the Phyllis Bortt Library and Literacy Center to kick off the summer reading program, so please join in and encourage your children and your grandchildren to read this summer, because we don't want what they characterize as the summer slide to happen, from not reading and keeping their brains busy. And also, Friday, July 8th, the Vale Task Force is holding a free family movie night featuring the Minions movie. There will be free ice cream and free popcorn. The event begins at 7:30 PM. The movie will be shown at dusk, and that is in the forefront of Vale Park on not terrace. All are welcome. And then, to reiterate what Mr. Harvey said, I have a prop here for Skynectity Smiles, and anyone over the age of 13 can participate. There's a bunch of different categories they can participate in, so visit dailygazette.com/skynectitysmiles for that. It ends July 27th. And lastly, I wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Keep in mind that next Monday is actually the Fourth of July, so our committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 5th at 5:30 in Room 110. And if there's no other business before the council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Palamene, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.